Good evening. The Town Clerk reports 108 town meeting members present representing the quorum. The annual meeting for the Town of Adams is convened. The Town Clerk will now read the Constable's return.
Adams, Massachusetts, May 17, 2023. I have served the foregoing warrant by posting in three public places in said Town of Adams true and attested copies thereof, seven days at least before time of holding said meeting. Thomas A. Satko, Constable of the Town of Adams.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, in the event of a standing vote count, I have appointed as tellers Colleen Byrd from Precinct 5 and Pam Duval from Precinct 3. Up front tonight, to my right are the members of the Board of Selectmen, Chair Christine Hoyt, Vice Chair Howard Rosenberg, members Richard Blancher, Joseph Novak, and John Duval. We also have Town Administrator Jay Green and Crystal Wojcik, Finance Director and Town Accountant. To my left, Haley Mezwar, Town Clerk, Carrie Burnett, Finance Committee Chair, and Edmund St. John, Town Counsel. We have some newly elected precinct members that were elected in May. From Precinct 1, Diane Parsons. Precinct 2, Ann Bartlett, Nathan Duziak, and Andrew, I'm sorry, Prystansky? Prystansky. Precinct 3, Pam Duval, Scott Kelly, and Rhoda Ware. Precinct 4, Kristy Mezwar, Paula Wheeler. And Precinct 5, Colleen Byrd, Mary Chuck, Jackie Hadad, Kathy Hines, Elaine Malillo, Olivia Malillo, and Mark Paris. Thank you very much. Town meeting members who wish to make amendments to any articles this evening, those amendments need to be submitted in writing. If you have not prepared your, any amendments in writing, there are papers and pens and pencils available up front. At this time, the Town Clerk will present the Town of Adams scholarships.
This year's recipients, from Husick Valley High School, Tia Karar, Chloe King, and Samantha LaHolt. From McCann Tech, Noah Bremen, Aaron Chimpah, Josephine Hartwig, Kiara Lennon, and Macy Tetrow. And postgraduate will be Jackie Case. And each person receives a $300 scholarship if they meet all the requirements after their first semester.
The annual town report dedication this evening will be presented by Town Administrator Jay Green.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our annual town meeting this evening. We have a special guest with us tonight, a familiar face whom probably you all recognize, and I will point him and his lovely spouse out, Mr. Steve Scrockey, formerly with the Adams DPW, who's now upset that he was brought here under false pretenses and has now figured it out. I'll read this year's dedication. This year's town report is dedicated to a 40-year employee of the Town of Adams and a devoted husband, father, and community member, Stephen Scrockey. Steve began his employment with the Town of Adams in 1982 as a seasonal laborer with the Department of Public Works. In 1985, Steve secured a full-time position with the DPW and worked his way up through the ranks as laborer, equipment operator, and foreman of Parks and Grounds, the position he retired from in 2022 with 40 years of service. Steve was a great role model to others within the Department of Public Works and often provided leadership and guidance to seasonal employees who are responsible for basic groundskeeping in the parks and cemeteries. Steve's care and pride in his community was always illustrated in his work, often going above and beyond the expectations of his job to fill a needed role. Steve's goal was always to make Adams an attractive community. He took pride in the condition of the town's fields and fieldhouses. He collaborated with the Community Development Department on field renovations and the Parks Commission on acceptable uses of the facilities. He helped organize flower plantings around town and took great pride in making sure downtown looked colorful and the cemetery's life golf courses for Memorial Day. Steve especially loves to spread holiday cheer. He relished the opportunity to decorate the town each year and facilitate the annual tree lighting. One of his last purchases as foreman were new bows and garland for the ornamental lightpoles. He was also instrumental in developing the lightpole banner program in the downtown area. Although retirement was a difficult decision for Steve, he still sought opportunities to contribute. On his own time, he provided mentorship to his successor at Parks and Grounds Foreman to ensure that all the details about maintaining the town's recreational facilities were shared and without hesitation stepped into the role of transfer station attendant so that he could continue to serve and interact with the community that he adores. Similarly, this spring, when the town needed additional help with mowing and preparations for Memorial Day, Steve returned to where he began as a seasonal laborer. Steve is passionate about bringing smiles to the faces of those around him, particularly this Town Administrator, and his sense of humor, sometimes irreverent, an infectious laugh, always accomplished that goal. Our community is better because of Steve's dedication and pride, and we thank him for our contribu-, his contributions to our town. On September 23, 1983, Steve married the love of his life, Diane Koperniac, who's here with him tonight, and she was a cohort in our deception to get him here. The couple later went on to have two children. Steve and Diane love to travel, and we wish them both well in Steve's retirement. Thank you, Steve, for all that you do. Come on up.
I would point out to you that there is a Scrivener's error on Article 17. At the end of the article, it ends with a T. It should read "to" and period. Hope you'll note that. That was Article 17. Page 18 in your book. Okay, we're going to go through the call of the warrant as we do annually. We will call each article. If a town meeting member wishes to hold an article, I ask that you please stand, state your name, and your precinct number. At the end of the call of the warrant, we will move those articles not held en masse, and after that, we will take up those articles held. Beginning with the annual articles. Article 1, elect other officers not previously chosen. Article 2, the selectmen's report. Article 3, committee reports. Article 4, compensation of elected officials. I'm sorry, Mr. Cowie, you're holding. 4? Okay, Mr. Cowie and Ms. Cussonetti are both holding Article 4. Moving on to the budget articles. Article 5, the operating omnibus article. Thank you, Mr. Cowie. Article 6, the capital omnibus article. Article 7, capital infrastructure and equipment outlay. The regional school assessments. Article 8, Husick Valley Regional School District Assessment. It's a tie. Okay, Mr. Cowie? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. Article 9, Northern Berkshire Regional Vocational School District Assessment. Transfer to special funds articles. Article 10, free cash to lower the tax rate. Article 11, stabilization fund appropriation. Article 12, reserve fund trans-, appropriation. It's gonna be a night. Okay, Article 13, unpaid bills. The annual authorization articles. Article 14, authorization to apply for community development block grants. Article 15, authorization to apply for community facilities grants. Article 16, authorization to accept perpetual care monies. Article 17, authorization to borrow. Article 18, authorize revolving funds spending limits. Article 19, amend compensation plan. Bylaw amendments. Article 20, vote to amend Chapter 86, Police Department, Section 2C. Thank you. Travis, I'm sorry, what precinct?
Precinct 1.
Article 21, vote to amend Chapter 46, the Finance Committee, Section 1. Special articles. Article 22, Economic Development Fund. Article 24, reappropriation of unspent capital funds. And Article 25, to transact other business. One minute. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Ms. Burnett, Chair of the Finance Committee, moves the following articles as recommended. 1, 2, 3, 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 24, and 25. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Byros. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, at the top, Article 4. To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town in accordance with the provisions of Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as amended, and to see if any of said salaries and compensation shall be increased or take any other action in relation thereto, you see on page 9 of your booklet the salaries that are being proposed. Ms. Cussonetti, I'm going to let you go first, then Mr. Cowie.
Carol Cussonetti, Precinct 5. So the salaries for the full-time elected positions under Article 4 do not reflect the 2.5% wage increase as appropriated in the budget for fiscal '24. The salaries listed are last year's, so it's really an error. The 2.5% base wage increase is appropriated in Article 5 under personnel services within their prospective budgets. So the amendment that I'm proposing is to vote to increase the salaries and compensation of full-time assessor, treasurer, collector, and town clerk to $76,501.
There is an amendment to Article 4 to increase the salaries and compensation of full-time assessor, treasurer, collector, and town clerk to $76,501. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Byros. Discussion? Mr. Shafley?
Second?
Oh, you're second? Okay, good. Two seconds. Thank you. All in favor?
Can you just tell me that?
$76,501. Each one? Yes. Any other discussion on that before I move the amendment? Are you going to discuss the amendment, Mr. Cowie?
Well, yes, I had the same amendment, but you said you wanted it in the right section.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, a second amendment?
No, I was saying 1.
It's the same 1.
But I said you wanted it in the right section.
Okay.
Then I got some questions.
Thank you. Okay. So we do have, so are you going to discuss the amendment, Mr. Cowie? Do you want to wait and vote the amendment and then go back to the article as amended?
No, I want, I want to discuss this because before I drafted this, what I did was I went to the minutes for the selectmen's meetings, the minutes for the finance committee meetings, to try and find out if this was intended or just oversight. The selectmen's minutes, they didn't even discuss it at all. The finance committee doesn't have any meeting minutes, at least, I don't think. I think they're required by law to have them, but they're not on file. You can't see them on the town's webpage. There's nothing there. So I was hoping I could find some guidance, and maybe they had some discussion about this. But other than that, we can proceed and vote on it.
Mr. Green, do we have anything?
I can just address the minutes for the finance committee. They wouldn't be posted yet because they haven't met since they approved the budget. So they would not have been able to vote on their minutes to have them posted.
But they are. But I believe the Massachusetts statute requires that they be timely filed. Now, what timely may mean, I would think 30 days.
I can have Town Council double-check this, but I believe it is 30 days or three meetings, whichever is more time. So the finance committee would have up to three meetings in order to approve the minutes in which they did discuss this budget item. But Town Council can double-check.
It would help us, though, sitting out here, if we could refer to the meeting minutes and see if you did discuss it, and that would help us.
So I think what would really help everybody understand is, in the budget detail sheets of which the finance committee and the select board looks at, when they determine how much to spend on a particular department, that line item of $76,501, I just checked, was in the department budget. So when the finance committee members actually looked at, how much are we going to spend on general government this year? What are the salaries? Those, that item was in there. So when they took a vote, they voted on $76,501. So it's a Scrivener's error in that it wasn't transferred over to this document, this Word document. It generates, this generates in a Word document at the beginning. It's not that sophisticated. It starts off as a Word document, and that 2.5% wasn't incorporated in. So if you, what you really appropriate, so Article 4, you appropriate and approve those salaries, then you turn over to page 5. Page 5 is actually the appropriation where the expenditure is authorized, and that number is correct under general government, assessor, treasurer, collector, town clerk. Also, Sten is here from the Berkshire Eagle. I'm going to take the opportunity to call him out. He's shaking his head at me. For those of you who have been with Town Meeting for a while, personal services budgets include everybody in the department. They include our health benefits, they include workman's comp, et cetera. Thank you, Fred and your lovely wife, for that question earlier. The salary is not, for example, my salary is not $201,000 a year. I wish. Thank you, Star. That is not the case. So for example, when you look at general government assessor, Paula's salary is not $135,400. That includes her salary, it includes any insurance benefits that go along with the position, goes along with the administrative assistance in the department as well. So you're actually voting on the grand total of expenditure for the costs associated with staffing the department. So in this situation, there's no error because you're appropriating the correct amount. We just needed to authorize it correctly under Article 4. So I hope that that sheds a little bit of light on it for you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes. Absolutely, Mr. St. John, thank you.
I just wanted to just respond to Mr. Cowie's suggestion regarding the untimeliness of the meeting, or the approval of the minutes. And the open meeting law requires that the minutes be approved in a timely manner, which is defined as within the next three public body meetings or 30 days from the date of the meeting, which I believe Selectman Chair Hoyt said. So I agree with her, that's the status, so they're not untimely.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment to vote to increase the salaries and compensation of the full-time assessor, treasurer, collector, and town clerk to $76,501, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to the original, back to the article as amended. Is there any discussion on that? Joe? I'm sorry, you're right, Haley. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I come up in front of you again from last year when I did appear in front of all of you, asking that the selectmen and other members that are elected in this community be get better stipend than which we're getting now. Each and every one of the people that are elected are community members. They're giving of their time, and I think that more is deserved economically. I don't think people really do it for the money so much, but when I look at myself, and I'm going to speak only for myself, is $300 a month, that equals $25, $300 a year, that equals $25 a month. And there isn't one employee on the town payroll who doesn't make that much money in two hours. And for the time and effort I believe I put in to be a selectman for this community, then I'm deserving of more than $300. And I brought this up last year, and there didn't seem to be an appetite, and I didn't ask for a vote for the stipend to be raised. And I won't do it again this year, and I'll tell you the reason why soon. First of all, I brought this up last year, and as the budget season began to get going, I brought it again to the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee said, yes, we'll look into it, Joe, and we'll see what, what we can do. Nothing was done in the last few days. I had received saying that certain, not mentioning people, because I'm not going to do that, I'm just not going to do that anymore, that other select boards, members from other communities were not paid. First, it was Williamstown, and then it was brought up by an employee that Lennox didn't get any money for being a selectman. So, all well and good, that stopped there. I heard no more of the reasoning. But then shortly before this budget made, the budgets ended, I received a stipend report from, I don't know what year it was, and it's two columns. One, previous stipends; second column, current stipends. So I don't know what year it was, but I'll read previous stipends, and I don't remember having been a selectman going for 11 years. I don't remember them ever that high. The chairman, $2,000. Selectmen, each selectman, $1,200. Assessor, part-time chair, $1,800. Assessor, part-time, $1,800. Register of Voters chair, $625. Register of Voters, $525. Register of Voters, $525. Register of Voters clerk, $300. Cemetery Commission chair, $600. Cemetery Commissioners, $500. Cemetery Commissioners, $500. Board of Health chair, $1,386. Board of Health member, $924. Board of Health member, $924. Moderator, $300. And a total came up to $17,509. Inflated as can be. I don't know when this year was, but I don't remember stipends ever being that high. So it was put on the high end, for what reason, I do not know. So with the current stipends, it comes up to $5,600, making the additional up to the budget stipends $11,909. And what I was told it would do is that it would be addition to our tax rate of 0.02. So that's how petty it got. And what bothers me the most of all this is that there wasn't a very good faith within people to try to even look at it. I suggested it, and a selectman, it would help me pay a bill or two, and I think I'm deserving of that. As you can see, it wasn't too much all of a sudden to raise salaries of other people. And so I'm going to just stop there, but I'd like to read one other thing. "As the chief elected and executive officers of the town, the selectmen are vested with all of the municipal authority, not specifically retained by the town's legislative body, Town Meeting." So when I look out there, you are probably the most important cog within town government because you hold the purse strings. And one other thing that has bothered me, and I've brought this out in the public. The chairperson conducts the selectmen's meeting and is the voice of the board. The chairmanship and vice chairmanship, which are rotated every year, are determined by the Board of Selectmen at their first meeting prior to town election. 11th year, never served as the chairman of this committee. I believe I could do it, but I haven't been allowed to because I don't conform. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on.
I don't want to hold it because, let me just add.
I think we understand, Mr. Novak, you don't want to hold it to move it.
Right. Because I don't think that I want to raise the taxes of the people in this town even a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on for Article 4. Any further discussion? Mr. Summer?
Is the motion in order to amend?
If you want to amend, we already have the article with one amendment, so we can certainly entertain another. Do you have your amendment in writing, Mr. Summer?
Pardon me?
Is your amendment in writing, or can it be?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thanks. What is your amendment?
I totally agree with Joe. I served on the board years ago when, and I was chairman, I got $1,800. And quite frankly, I recall looking at what that $1,800 did, and it pretty much covered transportation, going to other meetings, county select board meetings, state meetings and stuff. It was no money that you put in your pocket. I'd like to move an amendment to Article 4, that we amend Article 4 with the previous stipends that Joel specified a few minutes ago.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Joe? So to be clear, Mr. Summer, your amendment is going to be, you want to amend Article 4 to bring the stipends of the other elected officials, not the full-time board of assessor, treasurer, or town clerk, to previous stipends as outlined by Mr. Novak, in that the selectman chair would be $2,000. Selectmen members would each receive $1,200. The part-time chair of the board of assessor would be $1,800, along with the part-time assessor. The register of voters, are they on this list, too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Haley. Okay, they're not in Article IV. Cemetery commission, the chair, $600. Commissioners, $500 each. Notice the moderator stays at $300. Board of health, the chairman would go to $1,386, and members to $1,924, bringing the total amount of stipends to $17,509. That is your amendment, Mr. Summer?
Yes. Second.
Hold on a minute.
That's not including all of them.
So, now, I need to take out the, these guys.
You need to take out the Board of Registars because they're just within the budget.
Crystal, $17,509 minus $1,975.
I'm sorry?
Impact to the tax rate? Point? Okay, it'll still be pointed to. All right, so, Mr. Summer, I'm sorry, your amendment will be $15,534, returning those stipends that are mentioned in Article IV. The Board of Registars are in, built within the budget. Okay? And Mr. Haddad, you seconded that?
I seconded.
Oh, we got seconds all over. Okay, so we're going to go Mr. Haddad, because he was the first stand I saw go up. On the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, I have it. Okay. All right, so, any other amendments that we want to deal with? Seeing none. Ms. Burnett, the Chair of the Finance Committee, moves Article IV as amended with respect to the full-time salaries and the increase to the stipends for those elected officials, seconded by Mr. Byers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Article V. I have too many papers. Was held by Mr. Cowie. Article V, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or appropriate from funds, available funds, a sum or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the ordinary expenses of the town for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Cowie?
Yes. If we turn to page 10 of the warrant articles, under Community Development, there is a fiscal 24, 2024 recommended amount, $44,034. It's for the Greylock Glen Outdoor Center. My first question on this, is the Greylock Glen Center, is this going to be an enterprise fund department under the town's budgets? And the second one, I know this, this looks like it's six months, and I think in the preview you mentioned it's six months, so, is this intended to be a permanent position, part-time position, a position only during construction, and then you go to another phase, and this may not exist anymore?
Mr. Green?
I can take it. Thank you, Mr. Cowie, those are all good questions. What you're seeing here for the Greylock Glen Outdoor Center is the operating budget. The operating budget consists of $44,034. The majority of that money already existed in our budget previously, excuse me, $57,500 for operating expenses. Most of that money existed previously in the town budget, spread out through different departments. We've consolidated this year to begin to show exactly what it's going to cost to operate the outdoor center. For year number one, it's not an enterprise fund, nor it is a revolving fund, because the building at this point does not have tenants, so it's not generating any revenue. We anticipate probably next, a year from now, we will either create an enterprise fund budget or a revolving fund budget, where the expenses of the facility, just not unlike the transfer station, begin to become weaned off of the town budget, off the tax levy, and become self-supporting. So, in other words, what the building generates for revenue pays for any expenses. But right now, we have to get ready to be able to expend some money to operate the building effectively. So it's not enterprise, and it's not revolving yet. The two positions that have been identified to operate the facility are an executive director. The purpose of the executive director is to use the building to the highest and best use, that is, address the Board of Selectmen and myself on how weddings should be conducted up there, how to rent out the rooms. You have to remember, all of this is brand new. This is the first time we have the building. All the conversations from 2005 up have been, what's the building going to look like, what is the operating model, et cetera. All of that was determined years ago, so now we're at the point where we're getting the building. We anticipate the building operating. We need to be sure we have somebody to do that. I'm not going to be the guy up there that's cleaning the bathrooms, we have two custodians, they're already tied up with other buildings. We need to have one year's worth of operating knowledge of the building to determine what the building really needs. We could come before you tonight and say, we need five positions. I honestly don't know if it needs five positions. Donna Season doesn't know if it needs five positions, and she's been working on this since 2005. So we're starting smartly and effectively, and the two positions are executive director, that's going to oversee the whole complex of the building. That position will also eventually operate the visitor's center as well. When Council on Aging moves out of the visitor's center and comes into this building, somebody needs to pay attention to the visitor's center. We're getting a lot of attention, but really, it doesn't live anywhere within the town. So that's what we're going to be doing with that position. The second, now you see the funding for that position in the Economic Development Fund article, and that's only for six months, so you're reading that right, Mr. Cowie, it's only for six months. In the budget is a position for Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds. This is a position that is going to be responsible for building maintenance, understanding how the building works, monitoring warranty, all of that equipment in the building, the air vac, HVAC system, the plumbing, all that will be warranted. We need somebody to pay attention to it. The Department of Public Works cannot do that, they're not equipped for it, they don't have the skill set for it. We have nobody else to do that. Mr. Garner, the building inspector, is not going to go up there and be able to spend a lot of time. So we need somebody to be able to advise us and say, this building needs a custodian 24 hours a day or something to that effect. So rather than starting with a lower-level person such as a custodian, we would rather start with a superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, who understands building management, building operations, building cleanliness, and tell us, I only need one other custodian. Also, when the building operates, the intent is to have it open as much as possible. There'll be a restaurant operator in there, there'll be an educational service provider in there, and a retail operator in there. Those people need someone to go to to talk about how the building is operating, and that's what we intend to do with these two positions. Rather than adding them to the budget, all in one shot, all with one salary, all with the benefits, and taking a big hit on the tax rate this year, what we decided to do is ease us into it. So both positions are created, both position, one position is only within the Economic Development Fund, not within the budget, which means it has no impact to the tax levy, and only one position is in the budget and is only there for six months. So what we really want to do is get the building opened up, get it operating, get our three tenants in there, and begin to earn revenue from that, and then eventually, this budget is going to go away. Whether, John, you know, to your question, whether it's enterprise or revolving, we've bounced it around, I think that's going to be a Department of Revenue conversation with them as to what's the best way to account for that, and then eventually, we probably may not see it at all, because that commissioner of the foundation may be created. But what you're seeing here, and what we're talking about this year, is a transition piece in order to be ready to operate the building, which is a good problem to have at this point. It is stressful, but we think that we've thought it through appropriately and efficiently, so we're not taking a big hit. And I hope that that, Jack answers your questions effectively with it.
Any other questions on this article?
About the operating budget, does that include the water?
Judy, can you come up here? Thanks.
That's okay. The operating budget of $57,500, does that include the water that is going to the project altogether?
Thank you, nice to see you, Ms. Taylor. Everybody loves to talk about water with this project.
Well, I'm getting the feeling that I'm paying for their water, and my water bill's high enough, thank you.
The answer is, no. It includes it for now, but it'll probably be paid for under another utility line item.
When people are in there, they'll be paying for their own water.
Yes, all the components at the Glen, yes, if you use it, you pay for it. So the restaurant operator's going to pay their fair share, the educational provider's going to pay their fair share, the retail component's going to pay their fair share. In addition to the rent, there's also what's called a CAM, or a Common Area, Donna's nodding her head, yes, because there's a lot of anacronyms that fly up here, Common Area Management Fee. They're going to pay that fee, and that is the cost to the town of operating the building that they receive a benefit from. You know, it's kind of hard, how many toilet flushes from the restaurant versus how many toilet flushes from the educational provider. So the town's going to be getting income, you know, twice from that. So, you know, upfront, when we first turn on the faucets and all of that stuff, yes, we will be paying for that water. However, I can tell you a couple things. The building has very efficient plumbing, it has standard sinks, it has standard commodes in there, and it has one sink in the kitchen. All of those are high-efficiency faucets, we're not going to pay anything more than what we normally would. The Water District has also agreed upon a reduced rate for us as well. So at the end of the day, no, the tenants will be paying for it, but again, upfront, we'll pay for a little bit of it.
We'll be paying for it at first, and then when the people in there, they'll be paying.
Yes.
We won't be.
Same thing with electricity, same thing with the internet costs, all of that stuff. It's the cost of doing this type of project, which normally a municipality wouldn't do, and I'm not sure we ever want to take it on again.
Okay, now I just wanted to know, is the building finished? Is...
The building is under construction.
It's not finished yet, though.
It is not finished yet.
I don't really know, that's why I'm asking.
They're currently, well, thank you now for going up there, Judy, and trespassing.
I try not to do that.
They're interior framing, they're doing the roofing in the next two to three weeks, and they're starting to install windows and glass. If the weather holds, if the supply chain holds, we anticipate the building will probably be able for us to go in and begin to experiment with lighting and HVAC and things like that, probably late this calendar year, i.e. December, but we would not anticipate opening it until spring of 2024. And that is subject to a lot of strange things happening in the economy. And as I've told people, because we talk about this frequently, we've waited as a community many years for this, we can hold for a few more months to do it right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz?
Hi. I'm Kathy Heinz, Precinct 5, and I'm here to address a couple things in the public safety. I believe that's Article 5, what we're on, and I think it probably rolls right into Article 20, but I think because I'm questioning a couple things with personnel, it would go under Article 5. If I'm not in the right area, please let me know.
If you're going to talk about personal services, this is the article to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to increase, I know, don't shoot me, anybody, the police department personnel. I think it's wise to have as many officers as possible on the night shift, because that seems to be the bewitching hour. I run every morning between 4:30 and 5:00, and how we could do that would be, I think we could add one full-time equivalent to sit at the desk of a person who has skill to work the desk, to answer the phone, to triage, and that one full-time equivalent could be divided into three part-timers, and you wouldn't have to pay the insurance benefit.
Do you have a dollar amount?
I was thinking if you paid one full-time person to work full-time, it would be $18 an hour, which may come out to about $65,000 a year.
So do you have an amendment in writing as to what amount you want to change?
Well, my writing isn't the best.
Okay, that's all right, bring it up.
Okay.
Let's take a look.
I don't know if you can read my notes, but they're not the best, they're not...
So, that's okay, so come here. So, the bottom line is, you want to increase it 6,000?
Probably about $65,000.
65, 60, so this is $64,800?
Yeah, I rounded it off to 65. But you wouldn't have to pay benefits because you would have three part-time to equal one full-time.
Okay.
And then you'd have your sergeants and everybody else on the road on the night shift, and you'd have all your bewitching tape.
All right, I'm going to let the town administrator address this, okay? If you want to go back out there?
Amendment changing, increase by $64,800.
That amount of money would require Proposition 2.5 override vote. That now, with the addition of $15,000 from the last amendment, we've now reduced our levy capacity, which is the amount of money that we can raise via taxes versus the confines of the Proposition 2.5 law, which says we can only increase our budget over last year by 2.5% when you factor in new growth. So an amount of $64,000 and change would exceed our levy capacity, which right now is $49,765. That is our limit that we can go. We had an additional $15,000 in there. So I'll leave it at that. I'm not sure if, Christine, you wish to say anything, or Chief Kelly, if you want to respond at all?
Just let me be clear, though, this is a formal amendment, your article is a formal amendment.
Yes.
Okay.
I think public safety is a big concern.
I understand that. I have to call for a second. Is there a second on the amendment? Seeing no second on the amendment?
I have a question, please. Chief here, we have officers on duty at night now, do we know?
Ms. Taylor, you need to come up here.
Sorry.
How many officers do we have at night on duty?
Someone want to give him a microphone?
In the night hours?
Three or four, it depends on the rotation.
Three or four?
Yes.
It's not just one?
It's totally.
Okay, so, again, thank you, Chief Kelly. I did call for a motion, I did not get a second on the amendment, the amendment dies. Returning, now back to the articles. Anyone have any other questions, concerns? This is for you?
I just, may I say something to add to that? I was under the impression that there were only three officers on the night shift, and one stayed at the desk. Maybe I didn't have correct information, and I was presenting that as to have at all times each night, three officers on the road versus one sitting at the desk.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, the amendment died. We're going to go back. Thank you. Okay, so, because of the change that was made in Article IV, Article V is going to require an amendment, Ms. Hoyt.
Do you want to come up there?
Sure.
I do have it in writing. Thank you, you're very welcome. So an amendment to Article 5, and if you're following along, I'll show you the line items. So, under executive, under selectmen, under fiscal year 2024 recommended, it was previously at $1,834, that will now be $7,084. Under general government, assessor, the fiscal year 2024 recommended number was 135,497. It is now 138,497. Also, under general government, registrar of voters, it was recommended for $1,268, it is now $1,993. If you go down to inspectional services, under inspection services, that's where the Board of Health would be. So that number from fiscal year 2024 recommended under personnel services is going from $234,831 to $239,015. If you head over to Public Works, under the Department of Public Works, that line item would include now the cemetery commissioners, so that recommended $1,607,790, I'm sorry, $1,607,790 will now go to $1,608,440. That means, Crystal, I need the calculator again, for the total, yep.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay. So the total under the Personnel Services for fiscal year 2024 recommended will go You may keep that, but not my book.
Thank you. Okay, there is an amendment, one second, Mrs. Baker, there's an amendment to Article 5 as read, changing the selectmen's recommended fiscal year 24 to $7,084. The general government under the assessors will now be 138,497. The register of voters will be 1,009,93. Under Public Works, in the Department of Public Works, it will be $1,608,440. Under Public Works, in the Department of Public Works, it will be $1,608,608,440. In Inspection Services, it will now be 239,015. And your bottom line total on page 11 will now be $7,241,124. I need a second to the amendment. Seconded by Mrs. Byrus. Now, Mrs. Baker.
If you can explain something I don't understand here. He came forth, and he wanted to see a rise in the Selectmen. So what is there, a law or a rule, that all these other departments now have big raises and kind of throwing his thing out?
No, we, the Article 4, the way it passed with the amendment was that we were returning the non-full-time, all those other elected officials.
But he didn't ask for that. He asked for the Selectmen.
However, the amendment that...
Now you're raising our budget, because this gentleman comes forth to ask for a raise for the Selectmen.
Mr. Summers...
So maybe I will make an amendment to change it.
However, Mr. Summers came with an amendment to return all of the elected officials under Article 4 beyond the full-time Assessor, Town Clerk, and Town Treasurer to their original...
Well, then I would change the amendment. I don't know about Mr. Summers.
No, that article is already voted and passed. That article is voted and passed. So now we're on Article 5 to take into account what was voted in Article 4.
Whatever. I disagree with whatever the amendment was, and that realize you're going to be changing everybody else, because somebody comes forth who's making $300 to serve the community. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, back to the amendment before we have a motion and... Where are we? Oops, sorry. Mr. ... Oh, hi, Mr. Ketchum. Come on up.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have what I think might be a point of order, which was raised...
Bill, can you raise the mic up? Thank you.
I think this might be a point of order, but in relation to this lady's question, my question for Chair would be, is a motion to reconsider the vote the meeting just passed on the salary raise in order?
Did you vote in the affirmative, Mr. Ketchum?
Unfortunately, I did not.
Then you cannot hence vote reconsider.
Hence, my question for the Chair, though, for the benefit of the meeting, was could someone who voted in favor raise that issue?
If someone in the affirmative wanted to have a motion to reconsider the article, it would have to come from someone who voted in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. I just wish to the meeting to be aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, back to the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, which if we need to repeat, I can? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm feeling pretty good about the ayes on that one. It moves. Article 6. Oh, Article 6 was fine. Article 7.
Article 5, moderates.
Mr. Rodeck.
You just voted the amendment, but we didn't vote the article.
Oh, yeah, we have to go back to the whole article. Thank you very much. This is kind of fun. Thanks, Tim. Okay, so Ms. Burnett of the Finance Committee moves the recommendation as amended that the town vouchs to vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds as noted under Fiscal Year 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I have given a second. Seconded by Mr. Byrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It moves. Okay, Article 7, Capital Infrastructure and Equipment. I see you, Ms. Taylor. Hold on, let me read the article, please. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, a sum or sums of money as may be necessary, for the purchase, rebuilding, and/or installation of certain departmental equipment, for the contracting for certain services, buildings within the town, further to authorize the trade-in or any presently owned equipment toward the purchase price thereof, or take any other action in relation thereto." Ms. Taylor, thank you.
Okay, I'm questioning the capital reserve for the town administrator, the $160,000. Is that not a redundant amount to what we already have in the budget in the reserve articles?
Mr. Green.
Good question. No, it's different. The reserve fund is $175,000 that can only be spent for unforeseen expenses. Elevator breaks, dump truck breaks right in the middle of the fiscal year, we have no appropriation to be able to go replace those items or pay to have those items replaced. What we had found over the years is that $175,000 was being decreased over and over again by various maintenance items that hadn't been addressed. Air conditioning units, HVAC units, masonry issues, building maintenance-type items. In conversations with the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee wanted us to do our best to preserve that $175,000, because at the end of the fiscal year, any amount that is not spent goes into our stabilization account, which is really a fancy word for saying rainy day fund. As of tonight, let's all knock on wood, including the town administrator's head here, we have not spent a dime of that reserve fund. And if we are lucky, Jerry Garner, Facilities Manager, I always put pressure on him for this, and he laughs at me, if we don't spend it, we'll have over $1 million in stabilization for the first time in many years. So what this amount this year is, this 160, is not in an emergency fund, but rather for us to be able to take on various maintenance projects within the town buildings. Normally, we would ask specifically for you to appropriate $30,000 for this project, $40,000 for this project, so you know exactly what we're spending money on. This year...
So you really don't know what this money would be spent on at this moment?
We can, I can tell you this much, it's for purposes of public building construction, maintenance, repairs, and engineering for existing and upcoming capital projects. Good example for you is how we think we might want to spend this. This building needs bathrooms, better bathrooms, in order to get the Council on Aging over here. With this $160,000, we have flexibility to decide, do we need additional engineering and design money to get this done, or do we spend it on construction? I highly doubt the construction's going to be $160,000 or less, so it'll be more, and we probably won't, but we need some amount of money this year to be able to keep moving forward on our building maintenance projects. When we put this budget together, we're having this conversation in January and February for a budget that goes into effect in July and needs to be spent a year later. It's been really hard to figure out how much things cost. So last year, we asked town meeting, and you appropriated for us $100,000 toward various building expenses, and that was a little bit more specific. This year, we're asking you to have a little bit more faith in us, go to 160, and spend it on public building matters in this fashion. So that's a prime example for you. And the goal is not to have to always be reactive and say, oh, there we go, the elevator broke again, we have to spend $25,000 from the reserve fund, and we're not putting it into stabilization. Why do we want to do that? If we put more money into stabilization, next year, year after, at some point, when the Finance Committee gives us guidance, we'll be able to appropriate some money from stabilization to do roads and other large capital projects. You want to build that number up a little bit, hit your DOR recommended number to have in stabilization, and be able to ask you at annual town meeting to appropriate X amount of dollars for a certain use. I know that's a long-winded answer to your very simple question, but it's important for everyone to understand the context and why we're asking to do certain things. So it's a maintenance line item. It's really for Jerry, although we didn't put it in the Building Department. Sorry, Jerry. It's on my authorization.
Is there another idea, other than the school, that you have something you need to spend the money on right now?
Yes, there's front steps at Town Hall that really need, those marble steps that Mr. Plunkett had put in all those years ago, really need some attention. They're trip hazards. We have some security issues. We put in a building access system in Town Hall. We may want to look at a video camera system for Town Hall for security purposes. There are items like that. The library has its own capital item this year, so I don't think you would see anything coming, you know, over into the library, but at the same time, we didn't want to limit ourselves in case something comes up. Will you see it next year? I don't know. I don't think so. I'd really much prefer, I think Crystal and I and the Finance Committee and Select Board would rather tell you we're spending X dollars on X project. It's just been really hard this year to do that.
Okay, now, as far as this money wouldn't come from the revolving funds that we already have in place for the library, the school, the...
No.
In these buildings?
No, that's, those items don't really generate that much money on the inbound side of those accounts.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out, if it's redundant to other things that we already decided that.
It is supplemental. It's supplemental more than anything, because everything is just expensive. The, you know, different HVAC systems require, you know, funding. Every time an elevator has a malfunction, it's, you know, $1,000 to have a technician show up. We're going to renegotiate the elevator contract, I think, next year sometime. So it's not redundant, it's supplemental. The other line items that we would pull in order to handle building maintenance are far less than 160 and can't support what needs to be done.
Okay. And I had another one, but I can't think of it now.
No, go ahead. You got me. Keep going.
I think I'm good, I guess. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any, Mr. Corrigan.
Craig Corrigan, Precinct 3. I've got a question on the 26th Commercial Street property. If memory serves me, we traded a demo lien on the old Dueto Body Shop, and I believe it's $61,000. That's a figure that pops into my head. But since then, we've taken the tanks out, we demoed the building, they did some remediation inside the building before they demoed it, and we got, still have to remove the demo pile, and I don't know if the oil tank is still in the foundation, or the foundation is still there, but I'd like to know, how much do we have in that piece of property?
Right now, probably $6,000, because Tim Coda and DPW and his team were able to get in there.
You're misunderstanding me.
No, I understand you. You're asking me how much we have in the building from taxpayer standpoint. We've only paid about $6,000 to remove the debris. Donna can tell you what we have in the building from grant expenditures that don't impact taxes at all.
Well...
That we had to pay for the remediation, we had to remove asbestos, we have to remove the petroleum products.
Yeah.
Then we had to have certain materials that came down in demolition removed as well. Normally, it would cost anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000 to demolish that building. Maximilian donated the equipment. Our operator used the equipment on straight time, and we demoed it ourselves, saving the taxpayer almost $100,000. We have money budgeted under, on page 14, the item that you're asking for, Craig, at $65,000, because at the time we drafted this, the time we budgeted to come up with the capital projects, we weren't sure how much it was going to cost to haul all that debris out. I can tell you right now, we may not have to dip into that $65,000, that much, for 26th Commercial Street, but if you look at the language, it says, "Remaining debris removal costs at 26th Commercial Street," former mobile station, because that's what everybody calls it, "and related site completion work." If you recall, last year, town meeting appropriated about, I think it was $18,000 to repave that, because we certainly don't want it to look perpetually like it looks now. So we want to repave that. Again, with cost, we're not sure that $18,000 is going to complete the job, so we want this 65, that we're asking you for this $65,000, to demolish one Cook Street, remaining debris removal costs at 26th Commercial, and related site completion work, meaning paving it over, striping it. You have that concrete retaining wall that's now exposed. We want to clean that up as well. Ms. Snyder and Mr. Dean over there will tell you that they want it desperately for pick-up and drop-off. We'll have to talk about that.
But all these expenses are on top of the $60,000 that we forgave on the demolition lien. Is that correct?
I'm not going to say yes to that, because you're asking me to confirm that it was $60,000 of real money. That $61,000 of interest, penalties, and fees that the Town of Adams would never have collected on that property. It was never on the books.
Okay.
We swapped parcel for parcel. So we had liens on the Dueto parcel. The gentleman who owned that and had the liens on it owned 26th Commercial Street, free and clear. We released the tax liens, which means you have a base amount that was released, and then you have X, is it 15? Kelly, is it 15% interest if you don't pay your taxes? 16? 16, thank you. 16% on there. That builds up, and builds up, and builds up. That's what we forgave, and in return for that, he handed over the title to 26th Commercial Street.
Whether we collect the money or not, how much tax money did we, and demo lien, did we forgive to get that property?
I don't remember the exact amount, but it was probably somewhere between $60,000 to $80,000. Kelly, do you remember? The assessed value of the parcel was just about equal to what was owed on the other, and that's the trade-off. We took a deed in lieu of foreclosure. Could have just taken it by tax title. We didn't. We released everything and got another parcel, frankly, the parcel that everybody wanted, because nobody wanted to look at the dilapidated mobile station. And again, I think it's important to note, the building is down, all the debris is almost removed, and we've done this without having to ask for $100,000 to actually do it. Our DPW crew did that, and I'm going to keep hammering that home, because our guys are doing some really good work, and we're making pretty smart decisions here, trying to get some stuff done that otherwise we wouldn't be able to afford. So I'm still very confident, as your town manager is sitting here, that was a good deal for the town, and we're doing our best, and that's why we have that 65 grand in there. We want to pave it, we want to stripe it, we want to make that wall look nice. We may have to do some concrete work on that wall as well. I can also tell you about that parcel, what you got me going on it, is there's curb cuts in there. The curb cuts are already set in anticipation of that building coming down. We did that just as Commercial Street construction started. Otherwise, we would have been building that road, we would have had a curb cut in there, we would have had to spend money to come back in and cut up a brand-new roadway. So we were actually proactive for once in figuring out, we know we're going to do this, let's change the design now. That design was paid for and changed all in the Commercial Street project. So I...
Okay.
It's looking pretty good in my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Any other questions on Article 7?
I remembered what I wanted to ask.
Okay.
So with that $160,000, if you have money left that you didn't spend, will that stay in free cash?
No, it's being requested as a capital item. So the capital item will always live. It'll always continue, continue, continue. However, if we don't spend it, we can ask you next year, town meeting, next year at this time, to send it back to free cash or reappropriate for another. Prime example, all the way at the end, there's that article that you already proved about releasing the capital money for, we had a study that was once, last year, we had a study that was once done for parks. We never spent the money. We asked you to release it back in November to buy more equipment for parks and grounds. We did that. That would be the same maneuver. This year, we're asking to release X amount of dollars, you just approved it a little while ago, for expenditure. That's the process as to how we would do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article 7? Seeing none, Ms. Burnett moves the following, that the town vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, the amount shown in the following schedules under the heading Fiscal Year 2024 Recommended, for the purchase, rebuilding, and/or installation of certain departmental equipment, for the contracting for certain services, for the repair, reconstruction, and/or reconstruction of buildings and/or grounds with the town, and further recommend that the town vote to authorize the trade-in of any presently owned equipment toward the purchase price thereof, and further recommend that each item and corresponding amount listed be considered a separate appropriation to be expended only for the purposes stated in the explanation of the request from available funds as noted, seconded by... Okay, Mr. Byrus? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so move. Article 8, Husick Valley Regional School District Assessment, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds, a sum or sums of monies as may be necessary for the operating and capital assessments of the Husick Valley Regional School District for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, or take any other action in relation thereto. through June 30, 2024, or take any other action in relation thereto. The fiscal year recommendation to the school district is $6,526,955. Making that amount is made up from five parts: State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education minimum municipal contribution, also known as the foundation budget, $3,947,597; two additional operating assessment above the foundation, $1,428,277; three other expenditures, non-foundation transportation, $468,030; and then the capital assessment, which is the Housick Valley High School project debt exclusion of $683,051. Mr. Cowie, Mr. Novak, and Ms. Taylor held that. We'll start with Precinct 1. Ms. Taylor?
I just held it so I could voice my dissent, because I believe that $21 million to run two schools in this town with less than 2,000 students, $21 million is way too much. It's outrageous, and the school committee is not doing a good job keeping our costs down.
Thank you. Going on to Precinct 2, Mr. Novak.
I'm sorry, Joe, let me step out.
Hello. I stand here with very mixed feelings. Education, to me and to everyone that has children, is the benchmark of how your child or anyone who's educated makes their way through life. This is no personal affront to Erin, to Erica, and I know Colleen is here. But being a substitute up at the school, and being well-liked by all the kids of all ages, which brings joy to my heart, I see things that bother me. Since the beginning of education, from the one-room schoolhouse, to our rural consolidated schools, to elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools throughout this country, there are different factors that make a big difference in the education. And the bedrock of education has, and always will be, the schoolroom teacher. And as I view education, I see it for myself, being a substitute, that the teachers are really overburdened by what is happening in our school, in our schoolrooms. Our education is in flux. A lot of it has to do with COVID-19. A lot of kids lost their social skills. They're unable to integrate well with other students. Their education was taken away from going virtual. Impossible for kids of any age to ascertain on a screen and take all that information in and remember it. So I see that we need to do more for our classroom teachers. I've brought this up to Erin a few times. They're overburdened. There's disciplinary problems abound, and that's not only in our school district. That's all over, I believe, the country. A lot of it has to do to economic situations of family, the family network, how strong it is. But we're living in a town where we have a transient population. The old names that we all remember as kids, the family names, there are not so many of them that there used to be. And our school system has become a mini melting pot, which is good for young kids and students of any age, because they see what the real world is going to be when they leave the confines of the school. But I see that we need to educate our kids, not just through the educational way of doing it, but we have to do it socially. And I think that we need, particularly in the elementary school, when you're beginning to learn, you cannot have disruptions constantly in a classroom, because the kids just can't learn. And it happens frequently. Once again, no fault to anyone, because I believe it happens in a lot of places. But we need someone in a classroom to be able to usher out a troubled child, and be able to take them to a place they need to be. And I'm so proud, when I am at the school, to see how hard our paraprofessionals work. These people have to be dedicated to the cause, because they're taking care of children that are troubled, children with physical impairments, children with learning disabilities. And I'm beginning to wonder if our IEP, that's the Individual Educational Programs, are being met at the state standards. There are so many children within our school that are on those programs, and I don't know if we have enough paraprofessionals to cover the needs that they need. Erin brought up a great point to me. It's very hard to find paraprofessionals and people, because, in short, the pay is very low. So I think in order to bring more paraprofessionals into the ranks, we need to offer them more money. I personally feel that the school system pretty much is, was brought up by that lady there, that we're top-heavy administratively, and we're standing here now, and it is my belief that we are going to vote to hire two people at $80,000. All well and good, nothing wrong with educated people, but those people will tell the teachers what they got to do and how they have to do it. And I think money would be better spent trying to get people into the classrooms, maybe more type of counselors, because a lot of these kids are going to have problems throughout life, and they've already had them now. And once again, I want to end by just saying that this is no personal affront against Erin or anyone that works in the Adams, Cheshire Regional School District. They're all great people, but I see education in a different way, and I'm proud to be a substitute up there. And I love when the little kids grab me and hug me and say, "I love you, Mr. Joe." And kids in middle school and high school, I can relate very well to them. And we have a lot of kids in this, in our school district, that you don't know the half of it, what these kids are going home to. So with that, I just feel that we're a little bit top-heavy on administrative costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cowie, you also held Article 8. 8.
Good evening, Mr. Dean.
Good evening, Mr. Cowie.
I would like to see where we were, what we're doing, and where we're going, okay?
Happy to tell you.
I want to start with the remote learning. During COVID, we did shut down. And I think your school committee and your administration have both recognized that students lost something, mathematics, English, history, science. What is your administration doing to bring those kids back up to speed, at least up to where they were? And has there been any progress at all? And how long do you think this is going to take? That would be one question.
Okay, let's do this one question at a time, so that he has a chance to answer.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
So we're actually doing quite a bit. We've implemented benchmarking systems that really tell us where our students are at. We've increased intervention services for students. We've aligned our intervention programming, so there's continuity in what we're doing and connections to what we're doing in the classroom. As far as the social-emotional piece, which Mr. Novak alluded to earlier, we've partnered with Optimal Healing, and we have therapy services that are happening at all levels. We piloted it last year, and it was really successful, so we've been expanding that across the district, because there are barriers that are other than academic, being behind barriers, that are getting in the way of learning. And I think a large part of what's happening in the society today is getting in the way of what's learning. So we're doing a lot of work to try to reengage students and reengage families in the schools. We're working with the Family Center to engage families with the school and get them services outside of the school. So frankly, a lot. And I think in terms of the programming, we're also planning with teachers and getting them support on ways to bring students forward when we're seeing these gaps, so.
Okay. Next question, Mr. Cowie.
2019, Massachusetts passed a bill in the legislature that they were going to fund civics.
Yes.
Where are we on that? Because I don't, I'm not sure that we've gone anywhere with that.
Actually, we're quite far along. The high school level is kind of where we started with the civics project in eighth grade. We've achieved a grant that's allowed us to develop the curriculum. So now we've developed a curriculum that starts in fourth grade and goes all the way up through high school. And we've included now a civics exploratory for our middle school students. So every year, they have a small project that goes along with that. And it's really been fully developed all the way through 12th grade at this point.
So do we have a full-time or...
We have a full-time civics teacher in the middle school and a full-time civics teacher in the high school.
All right, thank you. And then I have to bring this up. When my son graduated from the high school in 1997, there was 1,997 students. Now, I think we're a little below 1,000.
No, 1,050.
1,050, okay. And we graduated 50 students this year and 44 last year. And that $21 million tag does stick out there.
Yeah, I hear that a lot.
I know. What's the future looking like with the middle school and the, down at the beginning grades?
The past couple of years, we've had encouraging trends. Our freshman class this year was 85. It's looking to be somewhere around 80 next year. Actually, we're doing quite a bit of work. We're working with a group called Portrait of a Graduate, that's really visioning what we want our graduates from Housick Valley to look like. And we're building a set of competencies that we're carrying all the way through high school. But more importantly, we just received designation as an Innovation Pathway High School. Two pathways got designated by the state this year, environmental science and healthcare services. And we're building programming that is career and college-ready at this point in time, because I think for a long time, we didn't have an identity, and I think we were missing the career piece. So everybody that was looking to enter the workforce would go to McCann, and we were left with students that were heading off to college or didn't, quite frankly, get accepted to McCann, and we're trying to find a way to meet their needs. So now, students are going to have pathways in business entrepreneurship, they're going to have pathways in communication and arts, sports science, the two that I had talked about before, and a couple of others that we're working on. So we're developing a lot of programming, and that's actually been opened up by work that some of these administrators that were referenced earlier are doing with the state. So we're getting recognition on the state level and actually getting resources to build the programming, so we can be a viable option for our secondary level. You know, and I hear the number like of 50 and 40, and I understand that, you know, you look at that number at the high school level and say, "Well, that's what they're graduating." And it's, but the reality is, is I have 1,000 other students in the school system, 1,000 other students that have a ton of needs. And, you know, a lot of people don't understand that, as the homeschool system here, we have to take care of all of our students' needs financially, from age 3 through 22. So if a student is a high needs student and has needs that are huge, medical needs, like feeding tubes and things like that, we have to meet those needs that entire time until they reach age 22. If a student goes to another school that's programmatically responsible, and that student's not successful in that school, that student ends up coming back to us, and we become financially and programmatically responsible for that student. And we also have situations where we have students that end up being outplaced, sometimes from under our control, and sometimes not under our control. And we have to assume those financial burdens as well. So it's a very complex thing. I mean, I wish I could say, stand up here and say, "Oh, it's simple, and we can just do this, and this is just our problem, and this is the solution." But education is complex. We're dealing with all of the problems in society, and we're really looking to make a difference for that student, to get them out the door and be a productive citizen, no matter who they are, no matter where they come from. That's our job, that's our mission. And, you know, I'm not going to apologize for the work that we've done, because I feel like we've done great work. The preschool, that's another level. We just got a large expansion grant. We're expanding our programming. We're getting another full-day preschool in our school system that's being funded by EEC. We've made connections with Magic Seasons in the community and the youth center. So we're funding those centers and now providing services and getting those students and families engaged in the school. So we're working from the bottom up. You know, I came in here in 2019, was just learning about the school system and kind of where we were at, looking at our data, and found a lot of things that needed, we needed systems for. Building, updating curriculum, maintaining our data, getting our data to the state. The first day I was in the job, I got a phone call from the state saying, "Your end-of-year reporting wasn't in." Great. We took care of it. So since I've been here, we've been building systems, but the things that we're missing here got magnified over the pandemic. And now we're dealing with the other side of that. And unfortunately, it costs money to deal with these things, and it requires a lot of us to work together. It requires not only teaching positions and paraprofessional positions, which we're working on the pay piece that we'll negotiate, but it also requires people to support those people in different ways. And when you hear about these positions, these are about supporting the staff that are in the schools. They're not there to tell them what to do. They're there beside them. And if you look in any of our schools right now and hear about the administrative positions, they're all in rollerskates running around that school, trying to help everybody the best way that they can and working really hard. So I'm going to land my soapbox right there, and if you have any other questions.
Mr. Cowie, any other questions?
No, I don't have any others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Ms. Hines?
Again, Kathy Hines, Precinct 5. I just want to expand a little on what Mr. Novak said. I, you know, I think the teachers are overburdened.
Everywhere.
Absolutely. I am a substitute, and I've been a substitute teacher both at Teconic High School and for Adams-Cheshire since 2016, when I kind of moved back to this area. I'm also an RN in an after-school nursing program for the middle school students. But I can see that a lot of the teachers are really overburdened. If they had extra help when they have a behavior in the classroom, it would help tremendously. Because while you're trying to tell, help a student with a lesson, I know from experience with the kids, you got two or three acting up, you send one out of the room, the other one still keeps acting up. So you're redirecting your time to try to get that child to calm down, and the others are like, "Oh, come on, we really want to learn." So I think what Joe said, it's not the teacher that's the problem. It's the students in the classroom, and I think they're lacking direction at home, because it starts at home where all this falls. And last but not least, Mike, one of the therapists that works at the high school, I know him well, and he's excellent, and I know he's doing the best he can. And there is a couple children that are up at the school that have had real behavior problems in the classroom with me, and I can walk down the hall when I go in and sub, or even when I go in for my after-school nursing program, because the middle school has a special activity program after school. They come up to me and they talk to me, and a couple of them have said, "You know what? I got to tell you something." That's huge progress in a short amount of time that Mike and some of his folks are doing. So I think the more we can intervene psychologically. And last but not least, in my opinion, and some of the research I've done, because I'm a candidate for my psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, the cell phones are a major cause of everything. It's increasing anxiety, it's causing depression, and a lot of distraction.
Which will be addressed in the coming year, I guess.
Thank you.
I guess that's a preview to the coming attractions.
Yeah, I think once those go, I think you're going to find a lot less distraction and a lot less behavior problems in the classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess the only point I would make
Certainly.
off of this, and then I can get out of the way, and hopefully, we can get out with our night, is that the lack of paraprofessionals that we're talking about in the classroom are not because we have the lack of positions, it's because we have the lack of people. It's like everywhere else, there are shortages of staff, shortages of people, and we haven't been able to fill approximately nine positions this year. So we're constantly shifting, juggling, and doing everything we can and racking our brains to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everybody in the building to the best of our ability. So I'm going to land my plane there unless there's anything else.
Okay. Anything else on Article 8? Seeing none, Ms. Burnett moves the recommendation that the town vote to accept the Housick Valley Regional School District fiscal year 24 budget, and to raise and appropriate $6,526,950. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Cushionetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
The article passes. Okay. Are we ready over here with this, or do we take the next one? Go to the next one? Okay. Moving on to Article 20. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 86-2C, powers and duties of Chief of Police, presence of Officer at Station of the General Bylaws, to read as follows. follows or to take any other action in relation thereto. Section, uh, Chapter 86-2C, powers and duties of the chief of police, presence of officer within town. There shall be an officer on duty within the town during all 24 hours of the day. There is additional background in your booklet on page 20 that states, this bylaw was enacted in approximately 1918. Prior to 2016, the station was staffed by a civilian dispatcher. When dispatching services and 911 was transferred to the sheriff's department, this bylaw resulted in a sergeant or other fully trained police officer be assigned to station duty, thus reducing officers for patrol duty. Despite a reduction of station-related duties, the proposed language will still require the town to maintain full-time police services, but allow the chief of police flexibility to assign officers as needed, such as patrol duty, thus increasing the number of officers available to respond to calls for service. This is one of several changes that are being considered to reflect current law enforcement trends, maximize the effectiveness of our police force and reduce overtime costs. This article was again held by multiple town meeting members. Mr. Hadad, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. I remember reading this article, I had to kind of scratch my head because about, I know, 20 or something years ago, when I was on a Board of Selectment, we brought in someone to evaluate the police department and how we could make improvements. And our board back then took one of the recommendations and that was put our officers on the street and hire dispatchers. So, I guess when there came an issue, I'm not sure, maybe six, seven years ago with 911, there was an issue about the state wanting us to regionalize, it was going to cost a lot of money to do the repeaters, et cetera. And I'm sure that those were truths. So, when it was brought to town meeting, that's all of us, we voted to go ahead and let 911 go to Pittsfield. Now, I do understand after searching around and asking questions, it wasn't, we might have been able to save that, there would have been a cost to the town, I don't know how much, and maybe we couldn't afford it. But then we let the dispatchers go and we put the police back in. I'm not sure why we did that. And I don't know who was pushing the pencil and couldn't figure out back then, putting our officers back in was going to cost us quite a bit of money. And I know the first year, it really put a tax on our overtime account. And I'm certainly not opposed to this article. I think it's extremely important that our officers get back on the street. But what I want to say to the board and to the administrator, that there may be possibilities that we could bring 911 back. Now, I've heard both sides, some tell me no, other people I talked to said, there could be a possibility and there may be grants out there. I don't want the same mistake made that we made six years ago when we, I don't think, really looked into it and we did away with it. And for the last six years, or how many went by, has been costing this town an extraordinary extra money to have our officers sitting on the desk when they really should have been out on the street. So, I'm just kind of passing that to you and I'm certainly not opposed to our officers going back on. There's also a question, and I talked to Jay about it, that eventually we're going back, hopefully we may go to a empty station. And that's why I'm bringing up, we should look at all different avenues. I certainly don't know how many calls the station gets under 1212. But we should be looking very close and not make the same mistake we did and costing this town quite a bit of money in the last six years because we had to put our officers back in the station. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadad. From the back of the room coming forward, Mr. Chief Tarsa, former Chief Tarsa.
Well, first and foremost, to Chief Kelly, no disrespect, sir, whatever I have to say.
Rick, can you raise the mic up?
Seeing that Mr. Hadad brought up what happened in 2016, which I think I can safely say I'm very well aware of, the issue, well, first of all, 911 going back to the police department will not happen. 911 told us back then, once you leave, once we leave, we will never return because it's not going to be financially feasible for us. That's why we were looking at the time to take and expand, to regionalize. There are a lot of other things that went with it. And believe me, there's not enough time in this evening to go through everything. However, at that time, one of the things that were, the selling point was, it was the legacy cost, it was salaries, it was so on and so forth, it was going to save the town $180,000 a year. The administrator at that time agreed that we could take and staff the desk with dispatch, with reserve officers. I asked for a compliment of five with the line item to support it. I was assured that I would get it. As I stand here, almost three years retired, we have never seen that money come to the police department. So, I was misled. But it was going to save 1.8 million over 10 years. And that's what he was looking at, the former administrator. But we never got the resources that we desperately needed. And it's remained that way. I can tell you that there were years that it was $232,000 in overtime. Another year was $192,000 in overtime. I remember my numbers. I did my homework. And I also remembered that we had the meeting at the visitor's center and the Board of Selectment at that time said, when I purposely brought up the dark station concept, the board took a stand saying, that'll never happen. Now, we fast forward seven years, we're talking dark station because that's exactly what this bylaw is. The chief of police should have the flexibility to assign officers wherever he feels they are needed. He has that under operations. Now, prior to 2016, the desk was manned by a uniform officer. Sometimes it was a patrolman, sometimes it was a sergeant, sometimes it was lieutenant or a captain, whatever we had. Now, I came on a job in 1984. We had captains, we had sergeants. And over the years, that's how it was. We went to dispatching in the 1990s. Chief McLaren was chief at the time when we took and transferred over to 911 capabilities. Now, right now, you have shifts, to my knowledge, I don't know if things have changed, but you have three officers on a shift. The idea is freeing that third officer up to go out on the street. Now, what happens when that officer calls out sick? Current contract, or the contract that I'm aware of, unless it's changed, was officer safety issues, minimum of two full-time trained, academy-trained officers. I don't think that's changed. So, if it's two full-time guys, that third one is supposed to be off the desk and now on patrol, is that position going to be filled? And if so, well, obviously, that's overtime. And now, let's say one of those two officers have an arrest. Normal OUI arrest can take six hours of paperwork. And that takes that officer right off the street to do that paperwork. Because the individual, nine out of 10, maybe eight out of 10 times, is going to be arraigned the next morning. So, you have to have your paperwork done that night. So, now you're taking an officer off the street. Now, along the lines of an arrest, you have an arrest, the person's going to be held. You can't leave that person in the jail cell by themselves. They have to be monitored every 15 to 20 minutes by law. So, now you have to have an officer in the building. You can't have a dark station when you have an officer watch, or you have a prisoner in there, you can't leave him unattended. So, now what are you going to do? It's easy to say, we can call somebody in. That's if they answer the phone. You try to call somebody in during prime vacation time, which is June, July and August, the odds of you getting somebody are really, really slim. Now, the sheriff's department, well, they say, well, you have a prisoner, you can transport him to the sheriff's department. Sheriff doesn't have to take that prisoner because by law, we have a holding facility in Adams. We have a jail cell. In fact, there's three male, one female, one juvenile, which the juvenile is no longer in effect. But we do have a holding cell in Adams. Under the law, the sheriff does not have to take prisoners from Adams and hold them at his jail. You have your facility, therefore, it's your headache, you have to babysit them. Now, let's just say you're going bare bones, minimum, two officers a shift. What happened, and there's mutual aid with other facilities, there's a mutual aid agreement throughout the entire Berkshire County. That was something that was done back when I was chief. And it's a good thing to have because communities, we relied on it quite a bit and they still do. So, if something happens, you can make a phone call, you have another department responding. But it's not always ideal because they've got stuff going on in their communities as well. So, there's times where they're not going to be able to send anybody. So, now you've still got that two officers on a shift by contractual obligations. What are you going to do when it hits the fan and you have everything going on? Now, you've got a prisoner that you got to hold? And there's going to be times, because I remember them very well, where you had two or three prisoners locked up. Like I said, sheriff's department does not have to take them. Sometimes they will take them if you've got two or three locked up, but not always. I mean, there's a lot of things, I mean, I've got note after note after note on here. And I'm trying to streamline this as much as I can because we've been here a long time.
I anticipate we'll be here a little bit longer.
But a dark station is a hard concept to take. And like I said, the chief is entitled to run his department whatever way he sees fit. But to take that ability away, I mean, yeah, you're only a phone call away, there's a phone in the lobby that you can utilize to make that phone call, to get somebody to come to the station. This was discussed back in 2016 when we had the meeting at the visitor's center when I brought it up. Like I say, I brought it up purposely to elicit a response from the board because I know what the administrator was saying behind the door, that he wasn't saying publicly. That's why I said what I said and got the response that I was hoping for from the board. Because there's a lot more to it. State police, if this goes to a dark station and a dark station is only the beginning to eliminate shifts down the road, nobody can stand here and tell me differently because that is what happens with dark stations. They look to streamline, we've got personnel problems in the town of Adams. There's no question about it. But if you take and do away with a dark station and have that third officer on the street and if he or she calls in, now you're down to two. And if you're looking at saving the costs, you got to order somebody in. You're still filling. I'd like to know what percentage is the overtime costs for covering the desk? Now, there was a time where I could tell you exactly how much it was. But like I say, I'm going on three years retired. So, what is the percentage, chief?
Chief Kelly?
Of overtime costs associated with covering the desk only?
Crystal could probably give us an insight, but I can assure you, majority of it. Can someone give him a microphone, please? Thank you. I know you're projecting well, but.
The majority of the overtime is going back to fill the desk when people are out. Because that's always the place where it goes. Sometimes there's patrol. I know Officer Cunningham, he would rather go on the road. But the people that we are putting is, when people are out, are at the desk.
Okay. Rick, you've done a question?
Okay. Yep. But I'd like to know what the number is. What is the numerical number for the overtime costs associated strictly with the desk? Not with, not overall, general overtime, because that could be court, that could be other things, trainings, so on and so on. What is it just for covering the desk?
Ms. Wojcicki?
I could not give you that figure tonight. I have to go pull my payrolls, look at the schedules of who was scheduled for what, the desk versus the streets. That's something I need to go back to my office to figure out. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But court numbers, training numbers, that's not where the overtime, the bulk of the overtime is coming from. We're still talking about filling those slots.
Like I say, I understand that, sir. Because it's always been that way. You have training, you have court, those are additionals to this. I just wanted to know what the figure would be. Now, I mentioned arrests before. Domestic violence arrests, when somebody is arrested for domestic violence, related crime, they're held for six hours before they are allowed to be released. You could call, easiest way to phrase it is, it's a cooling down period. So, now you've got somebody in there for six hours. That officer's got to watch that person for six hours. So, now you've got one less person on the street.
Anything?
So, not to go, because I can't legally, but we are currently in negotiations with the police union. And I can say that there will be changes that we are looking at that will change what you're talking about with that minimum. We are quite aware that what the state law and federal law says in reference to somebody being there with an inmate. And we have taken that into consideration when we are negotiating with the police officers' union. So, to say that that's a linchpin of, oh my goodness, that's not going to work, that's not the case. We have taken that into consideration. And we know that when we arrest someone, and we're not counting on the county either, when we arrest someone, we're already putting that in place for whatever we decide that that's covered. Mandatory, it'll be in writing. But let me make this clear too, while we're still on the subject. Yes, dark station, that is a possibility. There are other multiple possibilities that we're looking at also. So, let's not get hung up on the fact of a dark station. What this does is give me the ability, when I keep going in since '21, looking at an officer that should be out on the street, getting them out there. So, let's look at the options. But this has prevented us, and we want to do it the right way, that's why we're asking for the change, is we want to do it the right way and come up with scenarios that, one, keeps my officer safe, two, keeps the community safe, and three, helps the town of Adams financially. All of those things. There's nothing nefarious here. I just, I want to utilize what officers I have. And this is one way to look at the options. Dark station is one. It's not the only one. But I assure you, when we start looking at these other options, it's money. So, if you're not afraid to talk about that, when we get closer to that, I just don't want to get hung up on the dark station. It is a possibility. I'm not going to lie to you. And when I told you earlier that we have four, that is not always the case and it is a very, we do have overlapping where we are blessed with four officers. There will always at this point be a person on the desk. So, that cuts out one. I just want to get officers out there. I want them out in the community. And if we can solve this problem by looking at other avenues, that's why I'm here. Plain and simple.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have one more. I'm going to direct that to town administrator, Mr. Green.
Okay, Mr. Green.
A few years back, when we were discussing the situation, we're looking at ways of trying to put people on the desk. And I remember coming up with the idea that we came up with was communication specialists manning the desk. I even submitted a job description prior to my retirement. Whatever happened with that? Because that would put officers back on the street and still have somebody in the building. And there's a lot of foot traffic that comes into that building, especially on day shift and a good portion of second shift.
So, what Chief Tarsa is referencing is the job description for the person that used to sit at the desk was dispatcher. They were a unionized position under the clerical union and they were paid a particular rate because they had a certain skill set. Answering a 911 call is a different scenario than answering the standard business line of 1212 or sitting at the desk. When the town opted to remove 911 services from the town of Adams and send it to sheriff's control at the jail, the person at the desk was not answering 911. So, what Chief Tarsa and I spoke about was, we knew the highest and best use of our personnel, no different than we're talking about now, was on the street. But how do we solve the issue without using reserve police officers? And now, since Chief Tarsa retired, that is completely gone. The concept of a reserve officer, I was once one, no longer exists because the training is insufficient under the new post standards. So, we can no longer use reserve officers in that capacity. So, even if we had been lucky and we were able to recruit five or six, that's just gone now. The communications clerk is a possibility. However, at the end of the day, as Chief Kelly said, it still adds money to the budget at the end. That has to be a community decision. That has to be a community decision, and this isn't the venue for it, as Chief Kelly said. In addition to this, we're asking to relieve the bylaw, because the bylaw reads, "There shall be an officer assigned to duty at the police station during all 24 hours of the day." So the way that we read that is we have to have a uniformed officer at the station. We're asking to change that one line to, "There shall be an officer on duty within the town during all 24 hours of the day." Why are we asking for that language to be changed? To assure you to do exactly what Chief Tarsa said he doesn't want to have happen, and that is eliminate shifts and eliminate a municipal police department. That is not the intent. We are at full staff. One detective, four sergeants, chief of police, one corporal, and all line patrolmen. We have no open vacancies, we are at full staff. We're having conversations with the police union about number of minimum officers, that's what Chief Kelly was alluding to, and we're also having conversations about how to restructure shifts to allow for the current manpower numbers, which I think is 18, but don't hold me that, and figure out, does the current 4-2 schedule work or something else? There's other things that we're working on with the union that are contract negotiations as well. If the community expresses enough discontent, once we are able to figure out we need to go to an unstaffed station, the option is to put a communications clerk sitting at that desk. And why communications clerk? Because they have to have a defined job description. What is the value in paying somebody approximately $21, $22, $23 an hour with benefits at 35 hours a week to sit at that desk? That has to be a value decision made by this town, that that is a decision to be made. I, I've spoken with George about it. Most people that have come up to me said, "We understand you want to put officers out on the street." But the secondary conversation has to be, what is the impact? And that's why we're talking about an unstaffed station. But in order to staff it, and staff it without a police officer pushing $30 an hour, we still have to add money to the budget. We still have to have a communications clerk. They still earn a salary, they still earn benefits. And in order to have somebody there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we assume, just like Chief Tarsa said, he assumed five reserve officers at the time, Chief Kelly's done the math, it's six. We have to have six folks in order to cover that desk and anticipate an absence, a call out, "I'm sick, I don't feel well, I have a death in the family," whatever. So it adds money to the budget, and that has to be a decision that's made in the proper context to say, "Town of Adams says we want that station staffed." Okay, now it's Chief Kelly and I and the select board's job to say, "These are the options with it." So is it on the table? It's a tool. But with that comes a cost.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate both your answers, I, I do. I'm gonna openly say it, that I am gonna vote no on this, obviously, but I would also suggest that I would wait, personally, I would wait until all these books are in a row, so to speak, with what you're looking at, and then present this next year's town meeting, that whether you have a definitive plan on what you're gonna do, that's how I would approach it. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis Cunningham, Precinct 1.
I'll talk to the people. Hi, my name is Travis Cunningham. I'm a police officer in the town of Adams, and I've been here for 15 years doing this. Hopefully it doesn't put me on trash duty or something. I'm not trying to undermine you, Chief, I totally understand why we need a third officer on the street. I've been going since 6:00 this morning because at that time, we responded to a domestic violence incident, where I was on perimeter with a rifle guarding a house. And here we are now at a meeting, and after this, I have to go and help complete a search warrant and other administrative things because they need to get done, and we only have so much staffing. I applaud the chief for trying to find a solution to this. Some of the things that Mr. Hadad brought up were how many calls actually come into the station and how many calls are made 911. So when Berkshire County Sheriff's Control took over, they took over 911 services, but that didn't actually create the bulk of services that they took over as far as calls. They only actually received in 2022, 2,382 calls for service. That's not specifically, that's incidents. If there was a car accident, 40 people could call, but it would only amount to one incident, one call for service, just so we understand that. However, the Adams Police Department, our 1-2-1-2 line, which everybody seems to call, we had 8,645 calls. So about 80% of calls for service come through our 1-2-1-2 line. Of those that come into the Adams Police Department, into the lobby are 760 calls. People walk into the lobby for a myriad of reasons. Because it's safe, because there's someone there that they can run, if they need to run from somebody. For domestic violence, we have people come in, they run through our door, they say, "Help, I need help." We have a phone in the lobby, but nothing locks. And I'm sure there could be a procedure that could amend that, there are other departments that have that, but we don't have that at this time. We had recently a man from Romania who spoke no English, who came into our lobby, who had no means of contacting anybody by phone, and we had to use translator apps on our phones just to communicate with him for hours to find his missing daughter, which we did. So there's, the way that we have a department that's staffed with people, I think is hugely important to this community. I live in this community, I've grown up here, I've spent my whole life here, my family's here, you know, I have a child here, my wife, and I think that, you know, I've interacted with most everyone here in one way or another, usually on bad times, unfortunately. You know, we don't come to your best days, we try to do birthday parades, but unfortunately, we usually see you for medical calls or car accidents, or you're the victims of crime. And we, we want to have more services to provide to you. We have a manifest destiny for our department, at least how I see it. And Chief Tarsa and I typically disagree on a lot of things, but on a lot of the things that he said tonight, I agree with him on, about why it's important to have the man stationed. He was talking about things like our cell block. We know that the sheriff's department will not take our prisoners. We tried, we beg. We have to get a court order sometimes, called a midemiss, just to get our prisoners transferred there, and usually that's only with begging and pleading. We have four cell blocks and a holding cell that we utilize, and we've had them full before because of things like drug raids, or warrant sweeps, or just happenstance of, you know, full moons, or whatever have you. And that's where, when I looked at this amendment, some of the things that it said were that it's a trend to, to have this department be a dark station, or at least that's how I read it. I contacted every police person I knew. I said, "Where's this trending? I'm not seeing this trend anywhere. I don't see dark stations." I actually reached out to a police group of mine, and they were only able to identify three in the entire state. If we were to look at our department, and I know that Mr. Hadad brought it up about talking about our staffing ratios, if we were to look at our staffing ratios, the national average is 2.6 something, 2,000, per thousand. The state average is 2.24, and ours is about two per thousand. So we're under the state average and the national average. But we make do. Like, we, we, I love this community, I love everyone here, you're all very supportive of us, we're not fighting against you. When we try to do things like ask for staffing and ask for, you know, the change and things, we have seen an increase on the desk. We have to meet those minimums of having staffing. We have typically three because the stars don't always align, where we have four people, where someone, there's always a tragedy or, or something in someone's life, where there's a, someone has a baby, or someone gets hurt at work. Our job, we, we get hurt because people sometimes hurt us. And that's something we can't foresee. We're talking about overtime and why it's so egregious. One is the staffing, another is to do with the fact that we lost reserve officers. Those were people that didn't require health insurance typically because they were not full-time employees, but we could utilize them in a way that would mitigate any overtime with the creation of post. Now we also have the reduction in reserve officers to, to help with the staffing issue, as well as increased training requirements. So now we have more training to go to, which the overtime monster just keeps getting fed. I, I'm a taxpayer as well, I'm not asking you to have a million police officers in the town, have a dispatch center. I do believe that it's important to have a police department where you can go and feel safe. It would be great to have three officers on the street. We have enough crime here, our crime is well above the national average for violent crimes in Adams. We have a violent community, but typically these are transient parties. We have a great community, though. It's so polarizing in how, how loved and how cared for we are as a police department by our community versus the, we call it the 10% of the population we deal with 90% of the time, our frequent flyers. So we have our frequent flyers that we, we typically deal with, but that's on our burden, that's not yours, and I think that, I wish, I wish there was a way, I'm not eloquently saying it, I wish there was a way that, you know, we could eat our cake and have it too, where the chief could have his ability to control the department's manpower and shift it outward, and have the ability for the public to also enter it into the lobby and treat with our, our dispatcher, our patrol officer, our sergeant, whoever's on the desk, because those 11,000 calls for service, or rather, 8,000 that make it into our station, we have business administrative lines that nonstop are calling for all sorts of reasons. We have people call, "What time are the fireworks?" You know, when, what, like, just simple questions that we have to answer just as people, you know, and we like doing that. We utilize our social media to try to, try to deal with that as well, to try to have a different avenue to, to entreat with the public. But we just want to let you know that, or at least my opinion, and I'm kind of in the, the mix between it, between the chief, between the union, between the, being a member of the public. I try to, and I understand with the chief right now, with the union and things moving forward, but nothing's set in stone until it is, and things aren't in stone. And that's why I would say, I would agree with the chief, that until things are a little bit more firmed up on things in stone and writing, that it would be something best to look again next year.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna let Chief Kelly explain his need.
While Chief Kelly makes his way up, there's a few things I, I want to set the stage for. Number one, if there's any intimation at all from any of you sitting in this room that you don't think this was thought through, that is a falsity. This has been incredibly thought through and talked about persistently since I showed up as Town Administrator in March of 2019. Furthermore, the union contract negotiations have nothing to do with whether or not that desk is manned or staffed. It is not a collective bargaining agreement, it's not required by the collective bargaining agreement, and the collective bargaining agreement does not allow the patrol officers to determine what they do or where they go. That is all retained as management rights under Massachusetts general law, and the chief of police has the ability to assign officers where he wants to go. To keep, to frame it up and keep it clear, this is what we're asking the town to do, to relieve the town, to relieve the police department and the chief of police, the requirement that an officer be assigned to duty at the police station during all 24 hours of the day. That doesn't mean you're telling us you don't want someone there, it is allowing us to relieve legally us of that obligation to do it, and replace with the language, "There shall be an officer on duty within the town during all 24 hours of the day." Both Chief Tarsa and Officer Cunningham took us down into some weeds, and I think at this point, we should hear from the sitting police chief as to how he envisions this working out if, at the end of the day, this ends up being an unstaffed station. Chief Kelly.
Thank you. And I appreciate both these law enforcement officers and what they said, but I, I would, you know, I'll go along with Jay and what he just said. What this is about tonight is not that we have some plan in place that, once this goes, it's gonna take, it's gonna go into effect. That's not the case at all. Again, you know, Officer Cunningham mentioned community. We came here from South Carolina in 2021, we live here, and we are both part of this voting group. This is my community, and I care about it. So I, you know, everyone else, I care as much as you do about the safety in these police officers, so I would be really careful about continuing to go, that is an option. An unmanned station is an option. There are other options out there. And quite frankly, if it serves my goal, like I said earlier, to protect my officers, to protect this town, how we get to it can be discussed later. This was not to discuss what these options were, it was to give us the ability to talk about these options. That's what this is about. I love this community, and I want everyone to be safe, and what he was dealing with today, I don't like to see that in our community. But it is what it is, and I want, I want us to be the best department we can. Jay mentioned earlier, something needs to be said about the fact that we are the only department that I'm aware of around here that is fully staffed. People want to work here, people want to be in this community, and in the almost three years that I've been here, I think that I've proven that my, my focus is only on this police department in this town. I get nothing from, this is nothing for me. I want what's best for this department. So if that means changing the wording in this so we can all, as a community, as a police department, as a Board of Selectmen, can all look at our options and see what is best for the community. It's not just about that, there are other options. I would just remind everyone, remember that. We're not, this is not etched in stone. I just want the ability to do what is best for the police department. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Ms. White.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment, as a member of the select board, to speak to a little bit of what the Town Administrator said and what the chief of police has said. We, we've looked at the overtime numbers year after year. We have a responsibility to all of you to make sure that we are, you know, making sure that everything is done responsibly. The overtime costs have been around $240,000 a year, and that goes back to also when Chief Tarsa was serving. I did run the numbers. We've, we've been pushing for a change. So we did look at a bylaw that's 105 years old to see if we could look to have some more flexibility for our police department when it comes to staffing. You've heard a little bit about the Post Commission and their requirements for training and how we no longer can use reserve officers. Part-time officers are also difficult to come by because they might not have the training. If we continue to, like, limit ourselves and have restrictive bylaws, we can't be flexible enough to staff the department the way that this community wants to be staffed. I have talked to many of you who have asked me why you don't see more officers out on the street, why you're not seeing them on the bike trail, why you don't see them up at the glen, why you don't see them in all of these different places. We are restricted by this bylaw with regard to the staffing. What we are asking is to give flexibility to the police department, to staff the department in the way that we need to in 2023. So I fully support this, I am happy to see that we are looking at antiquated bylaws and looking to see how we can modernize our government. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anything else on this article? Ms. Hines, and I'm gonna start limiting time because it is now 8:15, and we have five more articles to go.
Since we're at full capacity, how can you start, how, sir, how can you, you stated we're at full capacity. How can you change anything around if we can't even man three folks, three officers on the road at all times now? And the cost of overtime versus hiring a few part-time people that could be at the desk? Because the last thing people really want is to have an emergency and have to run to the station, and a lot of folks don't have a phone, they're poor. Some folks in this community don't even have a car. I know that from the school department. And they may have to walk there. They want some person there that can help them. And having a cell phone doesn't mean you're gonna reach that officer because there's so many dead areas around here when you go to use a cell phone that they're out of range. And having a panic button, some people can, are already in a state of anxiety, so the panic button is just gonna increase that. And how fast is someone gonna be there to help them? Those are safety concerns for me, and I guess that comes from my years as being an ER nurse, having worked at Level 1 trauma centers, all the drama and trauma I've seen. And so I'm really thinking that it's really imperative to have enough officers on the road and have somebody at the station. Because even for someone to call, and old folk want to call and just hear a voice, sometimes that's all they need to save them.
Ms. Hines, I'm gonna let the chief answer your question.
That's all I'm gonna say. Sir.
Ms. Hines, all I can say to that is, is you are correct, and once again, I will go back to what was mentioned, where, where it seems like we're going down this one path, and that's not, that's not the case. We, we still, again, have to be open to possibilities. And those of us who will be part of the discussion, we will think of all of these hypotheticals and, and what is best to maximize this department. Okay?
Did I see a hand over here? Oh, Mr. Cowie. Oh, Mr. Cowie.
Chief Kelly, if we adopt this, all right, um, and you have no one in the station, let's say it's third shift, okay, how does anyone contact an officer if they need help, and it's not quite an emergency yet, so they're not going to call 911? How's that process going to work? How are you going to contact, you can't, you can't contact the cars?
Okay, again, and I, without being short, that's, that's only one thing of what we're looking at. You're, it's, you know, dark station, unmanned station is not the only thing that's on the table. What I want is to have the ability to talk with the people at my department in this town who can make justify, I, I'm not going to make this decision on my own, assure you. But I'm not going to answer stuff about one thing that's only one thing of multiple options that we have. Yes, there are things to consider if we have an unmanned station. That is not the only thing we're talking about.
All right, and then, real quick.
Okay.
When you go, when you, if we adopt this, and we're talking about overtime here, okay, how much overtime are we going to save?
That's, I can't, because we haven't, we don't have that in place, what we're going to, but there's no way, just common sense here, there's no way that if we come up with something, whether it is civilian or unmanned station, that that is not bringing down overtime.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to add two things to that. Number one, I'm going to give you an exact scenario, Jack, so you understand how this could possibly work. Right now, when you dial 911, you reach a dispatcher sitting at the House of Correction in Lanesboro. When you dial a business number, 1212, a possible scenario is you get that same dispatcher. That same dispatcher is going to dispatch a car in the same fashion, whether it's 911 or whether it's a, a non-emergency request. The dispatcher knows how to triage which lines to answer. That's the responsibility of the sheriff's department. We spend $25,000 a year having the sheriff's department dispatch 911 for the town. I wasn't here in 2016. I assure you, Chief Tarsa has given me as much of his institutional knowledge as possible over the pain of that conversation in 2016. But I can tell you right now, as a chief fiscal officer for the town, if we were to keep somebody at that desk, whether they're answering 911 or not, you're looking at probably $300,000 a year to staff six people at $50,000 a year. So, if you have a non-emergency number, and you're astute enough to say, this really isn't emergency, I don't want to tie the line up, you're going to call probably 1212 again, because everyone's used to that. We know that. So, it's probably going to go to the same dispatcher, when what we would do is create another business line for the police station to call during normal business hours, talk about firearm permits, talk about getting a police report. Chief Kelly didn't, was trying to save everybody time, but I want you to know that we've already gone through these possible scenarios as to how to go about doing it to meet the needs of the, of the community. Secondly, as Chief Tarsa got up here and spoke about tonight, he remembers promises made in 2016. If you do this, you're going to save $180,000 a year. Well, I'm not Mr. Mizuko. I wasn't here in 2016. That's lovely that we could probably come up with a number, but I'm not going to sit here tonight, nor is the chief, and tell you, you can do this, and you're going to save X amount of dollars. Why? Because we don't know. All we know is we want the flexibility and, and the possibility to be able to try things out, and none of this is irreversible. If we go forward with certain things and they don't work, we're going to go back and we're going to fix it. None of this is permanent. The only thing that's permanent, as Chief Tarsa said, and as, as Mr. Hadad said, the likelihood of this town getting 911 services back is, is, is impossible, and I'll tell you why. Because we're not a regional dispatch. North Adams dispatches, uh, Clarksburg. They're considered a regional, regional dispatch. Other towns that still have a dispatcher sitting at the station dispatch other communities, they're eligible for those grant funds. We don't do that, and that was a decision that was made in 2016. That's irreversible. But whether or not we have a, a person sitting at that desk, we can do that. None of that equipment is leaving. The only equipment ever removed is the 911 circuitry through the telephone network. That's gone. Our radio system is still intact. None of that's changing. We made some changes with that to improve that as well. The phone lines will still be there. None of that will change. So, it's like a, a light switch. And so, everyone knows, if you vote on this tonight, tomorrow, the officer's not leaving the desk. It's still going to be staffed. We're not just going to do it like that. One of the things that I think was done wrong in 2016 was very simply, we didn't really have, from what I can tell, a really good community conversation about it, and that's where I think the next step is. But we can't get there if this bylaw continues to require us to keep an officer at the desk 24 hours a day.
Let me see if I understand you then. Are you saying that a 1212 call, if it's not answered at the station, automatically goes to 911?
No. If the station becomes an unstaffed station, and you're looking at 2 o'clock in the morning to report a cat stuck up in a tree, you're still going to call 1212 because you recognize it's not 911, and you're still going to get a human being on the other line, that same human being who answers 911. They just happen to be sitting in Lanesboro, and you're going to get the same response from the officers. We've also talked about the possibility of giving the shift supervisor, a sergeant, a cell phone number, and blast that cell phone number everywhere. Cheshire does it that way. When you go to look at the Cheshire Police Station at 2 o'clock in the morning, no one's sitting there. There's a cell phone number that you call, and you get the officer. Now, is that officer always going to be able to pick up? No, because they might be rolling around on the ground with somebody. They might be dealing with somebody else. But there's ways to address this. The chief's point tonight is, we're not at the point tonight at 8:20 to go through how we're going to do this. We have to be relieved of this requirement first, and then move forward from there and have a community conversation. Board of Selectmen are going to end up telling the chief and I what they want us to do. Our job is to come back and say, in order to do this, this is what the impact is. This is the value conversation the community has to have. This is what the cost is going to be. Chief Tarsa and I, can we, could we have put communication clerks in? Absolutely. But you're going to see that budget line item go up because we have to pay them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Oh, more questions. Okay. Uh, Sarah Klein, then Don Summer, then George Hadad.
Thank you, Sarah Klein. Precinct one. So, my question is, would the savings, the, um, overtime savings of the police officer staffing the desk or the sergeant staffing the desk, could that be used to cover the cost of a communication officer and still be a savings?
In theory, can't say yes or no, because we don't know yet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summer?
I'm sorry, one more.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Can we, if, if we, if we vote on this amendment, in favor of this amendment, can we still keep the 1212 without, um, giving, giving up the line for a year?
There will be no immediate changes without adequate public notice that anything is changing with the police department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, Mr. Summer.
Hi, Don Summer. I may be missing something, but we have a chief of police here who's trying to make some changes. We give him the responsibility of keeping this town safe. He's discussed this with the town administrator, the board of selectmen. I think it's an easy call. Give him the opportunity with the flexibility. As the town manager says, if it doesn't work, we'll change it, but don't tie the hands of the chief. He's trying to do something. Let him do it.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. Mr. Hadad.
I may have misspoke, uh, Jay, but I'm not sure, although Chief Tarsa says it'll never come back, and maybe it won't. Uh, I've heard other, other word out there that there's, uh, possible grants. Uh, I was at Ozzy's this weekend, and it's a place you have breakfast, by the way. I got out of town once, but anyway, I, I ran into some people that were in the system, and they said that, they told me, whether it's true or not, I can't verify it, but that there's changes going on in Pittsfield with the sheriff's office, whether they're going to continue to, uh, do 911, and I don't know if that's true or not, and if they're not, where's 911 going to go? So, there's a lot of answers out there, and I, I listened to Chief Tarsa jump over here. I listened. Chief Kelly, I jump over here. There's a lot of good points on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadad. Okay, I think we've done this one. So, Ms. Burnett, of the Finance Committee, votes that recommendation that the town vote to accept this article as written. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Byros. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. The article passes. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 46 of the general bylaws to reduce the size of the Finance Committee from 15 to nine members by transition. That shall occur over two years with the committee having 12 members in fiscal year 2024 and nine members in fiscal year 2025. That provisions for members assuming non-voting retired member status after reaching the age of 70 shall be eliminated, and that the term of the committee members shall be moved from May 1st to June 30th at the end of the fiscal year. In order to implement such changes, Chapter 46-1 shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following language or take any other action in relation thereto. The new bylaw would read, "There shall be a finance committee consisting of nine members who shall reside in the town and shall be registered voters therein. Of this committee, no person holding an elective position or any other position in town other than that of town meeting member shall be eligible to serve on the finance committee. The town moderator shall appoint all members of the finance committee, each of whom shall serve a term of three years. It is recommended that at least one member from each precinct be appointed by the town member, moderator, to ensure equitable representation. The term of office of each such member will expire on June 30th. The additional background found on page 20. In March 2022, the General Government Review Committee began its work on reviewing how the town governs. Among the items reviewed was Chapter 46 of the general bylaws regarding the Finance Committee. This change reflects modern municipal practice and adjusts the committee membership based on budget and population for community the size of Adams. Mr. Cowie, you held the article.
Try and be quick on this one, too. Um, it's just unclear to me. Is, are, are you doing away with eliminating age discrimination, age 70, in essence? Okay, because it's not quite clear the way you read it. It's almost as if the only thing you're getting rid of is the, um, retired status. Okay? All right. Oh, I would be opposed, though, to reducing it to nine. I'm going to vote no against it. I would keep the 15, but.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Mr. Novak, you also asked to speak on this one?
Yes, very quickly, um, I took time to look at all the other communities within Berkshire County and the way that they select and the number of members, uh, to their finance committees. I don't have them all here, but I gave a good representative sample. Uh, I'm going to just do this quickly. Williamstown, nine moderator. Lee, nine moderator. Clarksburg, six moderator. I asked twice about the number. Six seems even, but I was told it was six. Cheshire, seven moderator. Mount Washington, five moderator. Other ways of, uh, having, um, elect the Finance Committee members, Dalton has nine members. They're all elected. Hinsdale has nine, uh, members elected. Lanesboro, five elected. Great Barrington, five elected. West Stockbridge, five elected. New Mariborl, seven elected. Sheffield, a little bit different. Chosen by the moderator with ratification by the board of selectmen. Uh, Tearingham, appointed by the selectmen, and Lennox, nine members. Moderator makes suggestions for finance members to select board, which then the board acts. So, as far as numbers, I believe that nine, once we get down to nine, I think that number is where it should be, and I asked people why, uh, they elected members, and this is no deference to anyone, but they felt that if you have a town moderator who has a way of choosing people that's kind of like favoritism, and I'm certainly not saying that about Myra, but that was their reason for elected positions. So, I just wanted to give some information about the way other communities choose, uh, their members, uh, in Berkshire County.
Thank you. Anything else on this article? Seeing none, Ms. Burnett moves the recommendation that the town vote to accept this article as written, seconded by Mr. Burdick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's that one. Article 22, Economic Development Fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Economic Development Fund a sum of monies used, to be used for fiscal year 2024 expenses. $65,000 for the payroll expenses of the executive director of the Graylot Glen Outdoor Center from January 2020, January 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2024. $40,000 to be re-appropriated from fiscal year 2023 to maintain the Community Development Special Projects Manager to work on a variety of critical development projects or to take any other action in relation thereto. And this one was held by Ms. Taylor first, and then Mr. Cowie.
My question really is, do we need all these extra people being hired for the project that isn't finished yet? Do you understand what I mean? I mean, there's nothing there, really. What are these people going to do?
The woman to your right, wearing the blue top, is responsible for getting the Graylot Glen to where it is now. She is Graylot Glen.
Oh, I get that.
She's already retired. She would love to retire again. Sorry, Nat, we're keeping her around. Yes, hands down. She keeps, Amon Coughlin and I, Amon is our new, wave to everybody, Amon over there, is our new community development director, and he and I would be lost without Donna. We have to pay her. These are those funds. What she does is, I can assure you, directly related to economic development.
And that's fine, but do we need more people?
Yes, you need the other person, the executive director, who I mentioned, to run the building. They're going to run that building. They're going to operate it to the, that's where that money lives.
In our budget, in Article Five?
No, they're not.
Article Five, so you're the executive director for...
No, that is incorrect.
Personnel, $49,000.
Okay, let him, let him finish.
There are two full-time positions proposed to work at the Graylot Glen. One of them, using hierarchy and rank first, is the executive director. The estimated annual salary of that position will be $90,000 a year. The funding for that position can only be found in Article 22 under the Economic Development Fund and funded only for six months. So, that's $65,000 a year, includes six months' worth of salary, estimated to be $90,000 a year, plus a family plan, which right now, under our insurance, is about $17,000. Nineteen, thank you. That's where that money lives. The position for Graylot Glen in the budget, in Article Five, is the superintendent of Buildings and Grounds. Don't quote me on the annual salary for that. I think it's around in the low 60s, but that, too, is only budgeted for six months. So, in terms of tax impact, the only position is superintendent Buildings and Grounds. The executive director proposed, let's hope we can hire one, and the vision for that is to run the building and eventually transition what Donna is doing over to another person that's in the Economic Development Fund.
So, those two positions of the executive director and the Building and Grounds is not being paid for in Article Five. It wants to be paid for in Article 22?
No. The superintendent of Buildings and Grounds is covered in Article Five within the commu, within the Graylot Glen budget. You're voting on Art, which is already, well, we have to go back, we have to go back to Article Five.
We did that, but I...
Article 22, you're authorizing us to spend $65,000 to hire an executive director, and you're authorizing us $40,000 to keep Donna on, which is an hourly basis. That's what you are approving under Article 22.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cowie.
I had my answer in Article Five.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? All right, Ms. Burnett moves the following recommendation that the town vote to accept this article as written, seconded by Mr. Hadad. All in favor? Opposed? So, moved. Article 23, appropriate overlay surplus, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the overlay surplus a sum of money to be used for fiscal year 2024 expenses. $233,000 for the Graylot Glen Outdoor Center or to take any other action in relation thereto. Additional background on page 21. The board of assessors voted to release $233,011.38 from the allowance for abatements and exemptions to overlay surplus on April 6, 2023. The town is asking for $230,000... The town is asking for $233,000 to be appropriated and spent with the approval of the town administrator for fiscal year 2024. Again, held by Mr. Cowie, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Cowie, you can go first this time.
Jay, where's this money going? Is it a back pocket in case you need it?
I'm not even going to laugh at that.
Okay, that's not appropriate, Mr. Cowie.
No, I mean, what I mean is, is, do you have expenses?
Yes.
That are already in line for that?
Yes.
That's what I meant by that.
Yes. There's additional expenses with the outdoor center building that can't be consumed by the approximate $10 million that we have to build the building. There's been other costs that have come up that we need to pay for, such as concrete testing, air testing, Donna was commissioning the building. These were things not anticipated when the budget was set to get that 6.5 million and then the $8.3 million. So that $233 is going into the building and also going into that water system to complete the building. For example, you know, there's no furniture budgeted in the $8.3 million for the building. So with the $233, we're going to be able to put furniture in there, and I will be humorous at this point. I told, you know, Donna yells at me sometimes. I said, Donna, you know, we're a very frugal community, we'll just use folding chairs like this. And she looked at me, she says, you really think people want folding chairs and they pay $10 million for the building? I'm like, okay, well, good point. That's what this stuff is for. Internet, alarms, cameras, things we didn't have time to finish, because when Charlie Baker called me in May of '21, the check came, and then we had somebody, the state rep, got to bid it, got to bid it. Well, you know, there's costs to that. We bid it, the building's being constructed, but we had some additional costs, and that's what we're asking to do with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. You're good. Anyone else? Mr. Novak? Let's, we got a couple more things, so...
Okay, yep. I'll be quick. I'll be quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to say, though, I mean, this is a town meeting. I don't think we should be hurried. I think, you know, town meetings are run as long as they do when people want to talk. But I think this money that is going to be appropriated is sorely needed. I mean, let's look at our community. We haven't had an economic trademark since the Berkshire Mills have gone out, and this is something that this town needs to get on its feet. And I think we all know that. And this money spent will bring back quite a profit for our community, I believe. The environment has been my thing ever since I've been a kid. I love the environment. I see what's going on up there, and we're doing what we asked so many years ago, to have an educational center, a campground that is environmentally sound. Everything that you develop, there'll be some glitches that will have to be worked out, but ensure this money is going to the right place at the right time. And I want to thank Donna also for all the work she's done on the project. She deserves a hand.
Any other questions on Article 23? Seeing none, Ms. Burnett moves the Finance Committee recommendation that the town vote to accept the article as written, seconded by, I can't see who's up in the back. Okay, right there, Bruce Shuffley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I couldn't see who you were in the back, but I saw your hand. Oh, hi, Lisa. Okay. We do have one more thing that we have to handle tonight. Ms. Burnett from the Finance Committee is going to make a motion to reconsider. Go right ahead.
I make a motion to amend and reconsider Article 5.
Seconded by Ms. Cushionetti. Article 5, when we did the amendment, we forgot to include items such as Medicare and unemployment.
So Myra, we just, so everybody, because Mrs. Baker just, you know, brought up a good point. I think it's very clear, just to reframe this very quickly. What town meeting did tonight was increase the stipends that are paid to elected officials of the town of Adams. That has added $15,000 to our budget. We have to take into consideration, it isn't just a flat amount. It is more difficult than just saying, pay somebody $1,000 rather than 300. It is treated under Massachusetts general laws essentially as a paycheck. With that, we have to add other items, such as workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare, and even though folks, these folks don't take health insurance, the state requires us to do certain things with that. So it is more than just going from $300 to $1,000. When we add money to the budget, everything is calculated out very carefully. We spend a lot of time building this budget. So you voted tonight to add money to that. So we have to be sure that we have the exact amount that we need. Otherwise, we will be in deficit, and we will have to come back here in the fall and ask for additional money, which will increase taxes, because we don't have any other appropriation. The motion was not to remove money from another line item and move it over. We added money to the budget. So that is why we needed to go back, and Crystal went outside and worked incredibly hard to make sure that on her spreadsheet, which is what we have open here tonight, we have three programs open that you see us looking at, and it's our budgeting software system and Excel spreadsheet. So we needed to be sure that we have that money correctly, so that you're not voting for something and then we can't pay for it. So that is what we're asking for. I hope that makes it very clear. That's why we have to go back and amend these line items here. Thank you, Myra.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Green. The first thing we're going to vote on is the motion to reconsider. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to amend. I need a motion to, Ms. Burnett did make a motion to amend, and that was seconded by Ms. Cushionetti. The article will now be amended to read, "The selectmen personnel budget will be $6,899. The assessors' personnel budget will be $138,541. The register of voters' personnel budget will be $1,699. DPW personnel budget, $1,608,449. Inspection services personnel, $237,148." Bringing the new, the amended total for the fiscal year 2024 personnel services line item to $7,238,831. Is there any discussion on this?
Just quickly, I believe if this was brought out earlier, there would have been better ways to do it. I don't want this town socked with any more money. I'm going to rescind my motion and...
No. No. No.
Okay.
So what happened, Joe, was that Mr. Summer put out through an amendment that went through with everything?
Okay.
So we're going to keep going with what we're doing? Okay. Yes, go ahead. Ms. Cushionetti?
What's the bottom line?
The bottom line is now $7,238,831. Any further discussion or questions?
So it went down.
Crystal? Crystal?
I think you said it was $7,241,000 before.
It did actually go down.
It did go slightly down. Some of the line items went up, some went down, but the total went down in the end.
Okay.
So I apologize for my math earlier this evening.